Good evening. This is the planning board session, Wolfboro Planning Board Session for Tuesday, May 6th, 2025. My name is Doug Breskin. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. To my left, we have Vaughn Dugan, Peter Goodwin, Roger Murray will be sitting down in a moment, Steve Webster, Nancy Wiley, Paul O'Brien, Kathy Barnard, and Jane Nielsen. The first item on the agenda is a preliminary consultation for the Wolfboro Area Children's Center and Brewster Academy for a boundary line adjustment. Randy?
Okay.
My name's Randy Tater. I'm in Norway Plains for the applicants tonight, which are Wolfboro Children's Center and Brewster Academy. I think you all know where the Children's Center is located, on Main Street. This is a preliminary discussion. Some of these are getting waived lately, the smaller lot line adjustments for subdivisions for preliminary discussion. I chose not to have that happen on this one because there's a couple of waivers that I'd like to talk to you guys about before we go to the final meeting, which should be next month, next month's meeting. Is it coming through okay?
Yes.
Okay. So this is really a lot line adjustment between the Children's Center and Brewster conveying about 10,000 square feet or a tad over 10,000 square feet from the Brewster lot to the Children's Center. And it is mostly due to the fact that there was existing encroachments along that property line relating to parking lot, pavement encroachments, shed encroachment, and so forth. The two parties discussed the possibility of getting a little extra land in that area. So we've done the survey that proposes that. We're not asking for any, I think we may be asking for waivers to site features on the final submission because this is just a lot line adjustment and we're not proposing any development or anything at this point. It's just, just simply a lot line adjustment. So the waiver that I mentioned earlier that I wanted to discuss has to do with the famous form factor in this particular case, which, because if you look at the, if you look at the chart, the Children's Center, I believe, goes from 26.6 to 27.3. But the Brewster lot, as you can see, the configuration was already pretty close to the form factor to begin with. So that one goes from 33.5 to 41.4. There really isn't any other way to do that. We tried extending the line and only changed it by less than a point. They want to, their agreement is a quarter of an acre, so we tried to stay at 10,000. Obviously, the form factor was created to try to preclude odd shaped lots that were used to get an additional lot or so forth. That's not the case here. So I think the waiver is, you know, reasonable for that. It's not drastically over the amount and we did leave, we did leave a throat distance of like 50 feet. This distance is only about 20 feet perpendicular that they're actually picking up. So the distance of the lot was only 70 feet wide to begin with. So we're leaving 50 feet there. It's just a number that I thought was a good round number to leave, making the lines parallel to come up with the lot line adjustment. It gives them plenty of room around the existing parking, puts the parking on their land, puts the shed on their land, and gives them a little room to rearrange their parking maybe down, down the road, as you all know, they could use. That's it in a nutshell. I wanted to see what the planning board felt about the form factor before, you know, on this preliminary meeting. Hopefully, the plans will look exactly the same when we come back. Any questions from the board?
We do have the authority to waive the form factor and it says for sound planning practices. And it seems like we're trying to bring all the parking spaces onto the Children's Center and that would be a sound planning process as far as I'm concerned.
I don't know if you guys got an aerial in this package, but this is a, I think this was a drone flight of ours from last fall. Said you can kind of see, you know, you can kind of see where the cars were parked and so forth and how it, how it sets up. I think you guys kind of know what that looks like. I believe, and I don't know, Leanne, did we have, oh, Leanne's not here. I believe I included aerials in the final package that you guys will get, so you'll have a little copy of this one. It kind of shows, gives you an idea of what they're using right now, what the Brewster lot has that they're using, to give you an idea of why this lot line adjustment is being proposed.
I think one of the other points under the form factor is to ensure that there's adequate space for a house and you already have the house. This is not affecting the building area.
Yeah, there is 10 foot, I think, I think it's 10 foot setback, you know, on both sides of that anyway. And, you know, the character of the land is probably going to preclude much anyway back there, but there is distance if need be. It's on water and sewer, so it's, you know, lots are serviced by water and sewer, so they could do something.
I would agree with Kathy that there's a basis for waiving the form factor as to that one lot.
Why?
Because I think it meets the requirements for waiving the form factor in terms of, and I think Kathy has them in front of her.
Yeah, sound planning practice.
And also because one of the reasons is to allow for a buildable area at the front and the house is already there. You're not going to put another house there. And so there is sufficient buildable area and this doesn't encroach into that area.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Thank you. Nice to see you all again. So what is the lot coverage, allowable lot coverage for this district?
I believe it's 30%. I don't know if we've listed the lot coverage in here and if we use it.
Yeah, you have it up in the, so the lot coverage.
Isn't this in the overlay district?
It's in the village residential zone, the residence office institutional overlay district.
But isn't there a different coverage?
The coverage?
But I think this actually makes the, it's way below the 30%.
Yeah, 40% for lots equal to a smaller than a half, a quarter of an acre, which they're larger than that, I believe, right?
But if you look up there, I think the village residential district is 30%.
Yeah.
On your left, I think, up, up in the box.
Under note four.
Under land survey.
Up there in the box.
Upper left.
Oh, yeah.
So the existing form factor is less than 30%, so it is non-conforming.
Yeah, the form factor isn't a percentage. The form factor is a number that's figured from an equation relating to the perimeter of the lot and the number of sides. So what that does, Paul, is if you have an odd shaped lot with a lot of sides, that throws that number up. Like a perfect square is around 16, just for, just for comparison. When they did the requirement, they were toying with 25 and ended up going to 35 because as you, you know, a lot of the lots are in that range. The coverage is a different story. We're not, we're not proposing anything at this point, so the coverage is to stay the same, you know.
So again, I apologize for my newness coming back to this board. So I'm reading a document here that says existing lot coverage 33.4%. Proposed lot coverage 30%. So if the lot coverage requirement in this district is 30%, they are conforming even after this proposed adjustment?
Yeah.
Okay. So now I go back up to, and I apologize that I don't understand the form factor. The form factor goes from 27.3 to 26.6. Again, my apologies, but layman's term, what does that mean?
Okay, that just means that the configure, the existing configuration of the Children's Center lot is less odd shaped than the existing configuration on the Brewster lot, Paul. So when we add this to the Children's Center lot, it makes the Brewster lot a little more oddly shaped and that's why the form factor goes up.
So if I could clarify just for a moment, a higher form factor number denotes a more irregularly shaped lot and the goal is to try to have more regularly shaped lots?
Yep. Yep. So the Brewster form factor goes from 33.5 to 41.4.
Yep.
That's a, my math, that's probably a 20% increase in form factor to the, to the wrong side. Is that correct?
I don't know about the percentage, but it is an increase in the number. How you figure it, again, pause, you take the perimeter.
We'll add six to 33 and a half and you get around 42.
Yeah. So, but again, the intent of the form, the intent of the regulation, when Rob Hausman came up with it, got it from wherever he got it, pulled it up, was just, there were some issues with people oddly configuring lots that allowed them to either create lots on lake frontage or other situations and the planning board didn't have any avenue to restrict that as long as they had the frontage and the lot size. Correct me if I'm wrong, you guys.
You're right, you're right.
Okay. And so, and so they tried to develop something that would give them an opportunity to disallow it by shape, Paul. In this case, that's not what, that's not the intent of this at all. So, you know, I don't believe the form factor is as important as it could be.
It's not all of it in your opinion?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. So Randy, do you have any comment on the shed location inside the setback?
Well, we probably thought that that would come up. So they would like to keep it where it is, but if it's determined by the board that, you can see, you can kind of see where it is and you can see on the aerial a little bit better, that, you know, it exists and has a little grass area around it. They'd rather not move it, but they could move it to get it past the setback and rearrange it if, if that's the request of the board.
And it's always been a Children's Center shed?
Yeah. I don't, and again, I was talking with the Director, Terri Anne, about that. I'm trying to remember what she told me, if they got permission to do that from Brewster or if they just did it and didn't realize where the property line was or however it got done. But in this particular case, if they do do some kind of restriping and parking, parking arrangement in the future, then maybe to be able to relocate the shed easier at that point in a better spot. So again, it's up to you guys. It's a lot line adjustment and it is creating it on their land now, but it is, it's still in the setback. So if it's the board's preference that they have to move that into a conforming location, then that's what you've got to tell them.
Also, in my opinion, it is way, it's a huge improvement over having a shed completely in another, on another lot. So it's an improvement, it's not perfect.
Well, I would say that Roger's suggestion as to how you can allow the change in form line factor is, is appropriate. And the other thing is that literally this lot line adjustment is going to change absolutely nothing about the properties that are existing now. And to me, that ends up saying that this is something which should be done.
Yeah, it's something that the two applicants have discussed and come to an agreement on the size and whatever the, you know, whatever the agreement was money wise or whatever, it's already been settled and it wanted to stay around a quarter of an acre. We tried a couple of things. I even have a piece of paper in my back pocket where we tried to make it, you know, straight across the back and see if that went up enough to matter, but it doesn't. So we kept it the way it is. And again, you know, I have time to change stuff between now and the final meeting because the way we've got it set up now, there's a, there's a, there's a week where you can submit revised plans, but I'd rather not. I think it's fine the way it is, but that's why I'm asking you guys.
You probably won't be surprised to hear that I would like to move the shed outside of the setback.
Okay. I'd also note that it appears that there are four accessory structures.
Four accessory, well, yeah, maybe. They're very well equipped, Doug.
I see three sheds in the garage at least.
Yeah. Again, if they do do something and have to go for minor site review, I'm sure we'll, we'll have to deal with some of that. Right now, we're hoping just to get, get the land conveyed and get their stuff on their property. But if we have to move the shed as a part of this, then you can make it a condition and we can give them a timeline or however you guys want to handle that. I'm not surprised by the request.
Unless you want to try to make the argument that it's more conforming to the setbacks since it's now on the owner's property.
It's more conforming than encroaching on the neighbor's land, yeah. Again, I, you know, we've run into this in other municipalities where a couple of them, where we were doing the lot line adjustment and the shed wasn't even on the line we were adjusting. It just happened to be on a different line, but it was too close and they wanted us to move it. And, you know, I, I tried to put my foot down on that one and didn't win. So again, it's up to the board. You've got to approve the lot line adjustment, so whatever the conditions are, I'll relay them to the applicants.
How big is this shed in question?
You know, it's pretty small. I want to say it's like 10 by 12, if I remember right. I don't know off the top of my head.
Is it on piers or a foundation?
It's not on a foundation. I believe it's on piers or blocks. So, you know, they could forklift it, I suppose. They'd rather not. They've got stuff in it, they use it that way. Again, that's as much as I know about it.
So I would say if it's on blocks, it's not a real undue hardship to try to move it. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, Randy, do you think you have what you need? Do you think you have what you need?
Yeah, that's fine. That's what I needed to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Randy.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Gia Realty Trust Site Plan Review, Construction of a Storage Building Edition. They've asked to continue it to July 1st. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Roger's made the motion. I'll second it. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. Next item on the agenda is New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club and Wolfboro Center Site Plan Review for the pickleball facility. They have also asked to continue the hearing to, where did I put the paper? To June 17th. I'll make a motion to have that hearing continued. Somebody care to second?
Seconded.
One second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Next item on the agenda is Atwell on Elm LLC Site Plan Review for constructing seven parking spaces at 14 Elm Street, Tax Map 204-008, Case 2025-001. Is somebody here to speak to that? They've also asked for a continuance. Sorry, I'm not up to speed on those. What was the date for that, Leanne? Okay. Today, yes, to continue to Mace, no, there was to Mace, it was today.
I think it's July 1. Yes, or July 8th, but I think in his email, he said July 1. Your memo said? Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, so June 3rd is our first, our next regular meeting. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Christopher and Cindy Sue Patton, two lot subdivision at 116 New Garden Road, Tax Map 247-001, Case 2025-12. Randy, is that you as well? Very good, thank you.
Leanne?
Good evening, Randy Tater for the applicant, filling in for one of my guys tonight on this one. But this, this is a proposed two lot subdivision for the Patton Family Trust. It's on 116 Garden, New Garden Road in Wolfboro, it's on the north side of the road. It's an existing, I believe, 12, you know, 12 and a half acre lot. They're cutting out the house on three acres, which will remain 9.5 acres. We've included site features, this site feature plan. I had to flip it, hold on. That's the, that's the original subdivision plan right there by Dave Dolan. This is what it looks like. This is what it looks like now. This is what it looks like after the subdivision. And this is what it looks like with the site features. So you're going to have a three acre lot, existing septic on it. We showed a 4K area for this in the back. This, this exceeds DES requirements. This one, even though it has house and septic system, requires state subdivision approval, which has been applied for. Again, I noticed in the planner review quickly that I just got, that there were, there was a comment to try to put the total frontages on the plan, which weren't on there originally. Frontage requirements are 200 feet, Class V status, which this all is in front of here. Per the letter I have from the town road agent, again, this is the, what we have on here is based on that. So the frontages on the remaining land are 280.42. The frontage on the house lot that's being cut out is 394.87, so obviously they're both over 200 feet. Trying to remember, site features, there's no waivers requested because we show all the site features and all the stuff on the checklist. There was no wetlands observed on the lot per, per the note here somewhere on here that was reviewed by ILEX. I'll go back to the site features. And again, the owners are here, if there's any questions for them. It's a two lot subdivision with one lot requiring state subdivision approval, one not. If there's any questions regarding the road status, I may or may not be able to answer them because I was informed that it was considered Class V road status. And an email to that effect, I'm sure you guys probably got, right? No?
I saw the note on the plan, no?
Excuse me?
I saw the note, I'm.
Note on the plan, yeah. Can I answer with that? That's the email from Steve Randall about the frontage. I didn't know if they already had it.
So there's a note on the plan that reflects the Class V and Class Road, Class V and Class 6 road status. And there's also a note in your planner review, Class V road from Pleasant Valley, Class V, Class V portion of the road from Pleasant Valley Road is .73 miles in length, and then it turns to Class 6 road to the Nudrum Line. And that is from Steve Randall, the Director of Public Works.
And according to, according to us, it's 400 feet, 400 feet past the easterly sideline of this.
So the entire frontage is on Class V?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's what I have a question about because a few, and up until fairly recently, one of the property owners let the town turn around in her driveway or whoever's driveway it was. And that was somewhere before, there was an exposed boulder or ledge in the road, which has now been covered with gravel. And at about that spot, there was a sign that said, unmaintained road. I can't remember whether it said Class 6, but it said unmaintained town road. And my impression was that it stopped somewhere before the boundary with the Morgans. And I think what would determine, but once the person wouldn't let them turn around anymore, the town got an opinion from its attorney that it could go down the road further to find a place to turn around, which I gather it is now doing. But what would really determine the, where the Class V road end would be the town clerk's And I don't know whether Steve used that or not.
Yeah, no, you know, normally, town, I hear what you're saying, Roger, but I don't see the Class 6 town road status other than if the whole thing is termed Class 6 under the town clerk's records. In this particular case, the maintenance, the year round maintenance of the road would push that call a Class V.
Yeah.
That's why we asked the question.
The fact that it is now maintained, actually it's been maintained ever since Kathy Rankin built her house way down the road, but the fact that it is used by the town to get to a turnaround spot would not change its classification from Class 6 to Class 5.
Well, then. I would suggest that the, any town accent in that area is only in the wintertime and so therefore is not year round maintenance.
Well, you can read what the road agent wrote. And again, there isn't anything in the town records that calls for a delineation line between the Class V and 6. We just ran into this up on North Line Road and there was a sign just like Roger's saying, and it had to do with the maintenance as far as the town was maintaining that for the status.
But all of that, all of that seems to be beyond where, where this property is.
Right.
Is there a copy of Steve, in my packet, is there a copy of Steve Randall's note?
No. And again, you know, we went to the TIC to determine this, well did originally.
But it would be the town clerk's records that determine.
Well, I think that's what, the, the distance is being, the distance that is being told to us is .73 miles from Pleasant Valley Road.
And then if I, if that's what the town clerk's records say, then I would have no problem with that. I just, I've watched where it's, the maintenance stopped for years and years and years.
No, I'm not disputing that at all, you guys.
So if it's, it's the town clerk's records.
Yeah.
But I think that simply because the town got permission to go on to the Class 6 road because I asked about that when it was happening and was told that the town's attorney.
Well, let me ask it, Kathy, was you at the TIC when this was brought up?
Yes, yeah, yes, I was. And, and he has since then confirmed it.
Okay.
At the meeting and then in writing, yeah.
So, so at the meeting, I, again, I wasn't at the meeting, who was at the meeting? And? So at the meeting, I, again, I wasn't at the meeting, well, was at the meeting, and it was determined that they would waive the preliminary, else we would have come for a preliminary, dealt with this at the time. But since that was waived, we're here at a final right now. So if that's problematic with the board, we kind of was hoping that we already passed that. You can understand that, right?
I kind of agree with Roger. I mean, this is a, all you need is a citation. You need a reference to where this, where these data came from. And that's, it's probably from the town clerk's office. This sounds like a degree of precision, .73 miles from Pleasant Valley Road. So somebody, somebody precisely, you know, said what it is. All we need to do is on the bottom of the page said, as referenced by maybe Roger, the town clerk.
To Roger's defense, there's a list, there's a list in Pat's office that has the different roads, and it says how long the town roads are. That's not necessarily the original layout, or what was the original layout, that's usually in the town clerk's records, that defines, you know, the road layout. Normally, in my experience, it has to do with maintenance. And that's usually what changes the status, whether it's the town or whether it's the state. In this particular case, we were informed that it was past this property, so that's why it's shown that. If there's a discrepancy there, I can certainly follow up on that, but I was unaware of that until just now.
So I think what we need to do is verify what is shown in the town clerk's records and compare that against the information that's been presented this evening.
Again, I don't know if that changed over time, or if they adjust that over time when they change the maintenance, but I can certainly check into that. I mean, that was part of what I assume the town road agent would deal with. So...
All right, are there any other open issues?
I have one question, and that is, what was the square, was that a proposed septic or house site on the topo map?
This square out back here, Roger?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a 4K, 4,000 square foot designated area that's suitable for a septic system. That's the normal thing that you put for the state, you know, when you have a lot that's not developed yet. So the leach field would go within that, usually they're only a third of that size, but that's what that square is.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mine is just a planning comment. I appreciate the fact that the new property lines are along stone walls.
Yeah, and we want, if I, listen to my guys, we wanted to hold the stone wall in the back of this lot, but we had to go three acres, so we had to go just past it, as you can see, and it had to do with the area. But in the other places, we held the stone wall where we could. And it's not very, very much different in the back of the existing lot as well.
All right, so I guess we have a couple of options. We can either continue the hearing, or we can make the approval conditional on verifying the class of the road. Does anybody have a preference for one or the other?
Well, I think we could do it conditional, but then the note should be recorded on the plan. It should, you know, we should cite something.
Sure, yeah. And again, if for some reason it's not class five, then the approval doesn't go anywhere.
Very good, all right. Then I think we'll accept the applicant, I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We'll open the public hearing. Would anybody member of the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll have some deliberation amongst the board. Any comments from anybody?
Well, I'm sure both of these lots have excellent numbers in their form factor category. They're very simple. They both meet the subdivision requirements. Ours are road frontage and area.
As long as it's on the...
As long as it has road frontage on it, class five.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the subdivision application on the condition that we verify that the entire frontage is in fact on a class five road.
Or at least 200 feet of it.
Okay, I'll amend my motion, as Roger suggested, to have a minimum of 200 feet of frontage on a class five road, for both lots.
And the reference should be on the plan.
And have the reference added to the plan, yes.
Second.
And Paul seconds? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next item on the agenda is Wentworth Watershed Association Special Use Permit, constructs two viewing platforms within wetlands buffer on the Brewster Heath Brook off McManus Road, tax map 233-002, case 2025-13. I believe Mr. Dan Coons is here to speak to that.
And I'm stepping down because I rent office space to the Wentworth Watershed Association.
And I'm going to step down because I've been involved in the planning.
Very good. Kathy, can you sit in their place, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
And Jane?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Dan Coons, I am the agent for the F, although I don't think that was on the application, but anyway. So this project is to place two observation platforms within the Brewster Heath. When it was applied for with DES, it was not allowed to be put actually in the prime wetland, but it had to be moved to the edge of it. So Brewster Heath is a designated prime wetland by the town, which means that there's a 100 foot buffer from that prime wetland, which applies to what the planning board is considering. Platform to the north here is... 10 by 12, whoa. 10 by 12, this was an 8 by 12 platform. Both are accessed by four foot wide walkways to get out there. Platforms are going to be on helical piers, which for the uninitiated are like giant screws that go onto the solid ground underneath the mucky surface above it. So, and the platforms will be three feet above the ground. Platforms will run from the edge of the, or the walkways will go from the edge of the platform to upland. So all we are concerned with is the area that is shaded and directly where the platform touches the upland area next to it. So that's the only physical contact. If you consider aerial coverage, each of these walkways, a total of 80 square feet at the most. And then there will be a set of stairs going up to this one, which will be three steps, four feet wide, totally 12 square feet, maybe. So that's a project in a nutshell. The platforms are done for outreach and education for the Wentworth Association. As we all know, Wentworth is here for water protection of Lake Wentworth, and these are to educate the public about the value of wetlands. And to be able to get up close and personal with those wetlands without any direct impact from foot traffic in the wetland, so.
Thank you, Dan. I'll add that there was a site visit this evening. Dan led myself and Nancy Willey, Nancy Wiley, excuse me, thank you, Nancy Wiley, the three of us went down and saw the site in person. Any questions of Dan from the board?
Two.
Paul?
It's nice to see you, Dan.
You too, Paul.
I didn't, because I haven't done here, I didn't catch the first part of your conversation about New Hampshire DES early on, what happened?
They have approved the application. It was amended originally. We had the platforms out into the prime wetland, with the thought this would give us slightly different vegetation, a little deeper input into...
I thought I heard you say it didn't get approved, so I apologize.
It did not get approved. We had to move it so it was not in the prime wetland any longer. And prime wetland versus wetland is a technical definition upon the depth of the organic soils, so.
Okay, and then the second, and this will demonstrate my naivete, when you say special use, is that something this board opines on, or is that a zoning board issue?
Nope, that is planning board.
Planning board, okay.
That's why we're...
That's just my learning, so I take that. Okay, thank you, Dan.
So could you tell us what kind of equipment is required to put the helical piers in the ground?
Portable hammer drill that sits on it and just screws it down in place.
Somebody holds it still.
Yep. Somebody stands there and holds it, so.
It spins...
I've also seen them used with a mini excavator in the past, but that's kind of overkill here.
And the presumption is all the construction materials, the wood, all the, all the materials that go in there are going to be okay for the environment that you're...
Correct. And all the lumber is going to be cut up slope in the upland, so that we're not transferring sawdust or anything in.
So is ground contact material acceptable for use in these, in these areas?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
And for those who may be unaware, all the pressure-treated wood is already on site.
It was brought in by snowmobile some time ago.
Lovely.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
This'll be pretty...
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to accept this application as complete.
Second.
Kathy seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion among the board?
Well, in my experience, a helical pier is the least amount of intrusion into any kind of foundation work, an area that you could, I mean, I suppose a pile driver, but you'd have to get a big machine in there.
And I'm not sure that would be...
That wouldn't be very, very good, no.
I mean, we're talking a couple of inches in diameter.
If I recall correctly from my reading of the application, we have an 8 by 12 and a 12 by 12 platform, two platforms, and I think the total ground contact is five square feet.
Also, we have a memo from the Conservation Commission saying they have no objections to the project.
Yeah, I have seen nothing but support, and it's been very well thought out, I think.
Right.
So if there are no waivers hearing that, I would make a motion to grant the special use permit in this case.
Second.
Paul seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next item, next item on the agenda is Brewster Academy Site Plan Review for Parking Lot Reconfiguration, 80 Academy Drive, tax map 218-150, case 2025-14.
Is this revised?
Just a moment.
Okay.
I'm going to excuse myself.
All right, Steve Webster is going to step down for this.
No, I'm an alternate, I'm not going to be voting, so.
Kathy, can you sit in Steve's place, please? Can you sit in Steve's place, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put all this stuff in my packet.
No.
I can help you, I've got a copy.
Thank you.
I don't know, I didn't know about that. Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to know which of these.
Yeah, you need to score.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Andy Smith, architect with DSV Architects and Planners, here to represent Brewster Academy for this pretty amazing project, to transform the center of the campus, to increase safety for the students, faculty, and people using the space in the center of their central quad area, and also to reduce the amount of vehicular traffic in the center of campus. We were here for the TRC review several weeks ago. We have been working to address all of the concerns. We have also been in constant communication with Chief Sadi to address his concerns regarding apparatus, fire apparatus locations and requirements. So we have a set of drawings of you that have just kind of incorporated some of those comments and some of the changes that have been made. And I don't know if you, I guess I didn't walk through them one by one here. Primarily, the project remains intact in terms of its overall mission and goals, but we have made just a few modifications to address Chief Sadi's concerns or access. So the first page has what is existing now, that's the current status of the project, or of the site. There is a parking lot right in the middle of campus that students are traversing quite a bit. The second page shows us kind of the completed, proposed completed state, where we're essentially moving the traffic flow for vehicular parking and deliveries closer to Main Street and away from that central quad area. The, if we go two pages ahead to the fire access diagram, so that's this proposed fire access one, that kind of looks like an overall campus plan here. Here's where some of the changes have been made. So the existing, this line right here, this path, kind of unplanned north of the, what we're proposing is the central quad area, we've revised per Chief Sadi's recommendations to widen the path. We've removed some of the decorative brick that we were proposing there, just to make sure that it didn't get crushed under fire apparatus driving over top. We're also showing a dashed line for a future connection over to Hesterbrook Road, so that we can get a full fire access through the site.
So is this thing dead ending?
For this phase of the project, is going all the way to what is currently the Arts Cottage, you know.
So just for my reference, the...
Paul, could you bring your mic down a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, yeah, great.
I tap on it, but Timothy would yell at me. So just for my reference, the, where the chief asked you to do something is the pathway in front of the academic building?
Just from the new terrace in front of the Hesterbrook Dining Hall. So we are upgrading that for the...
Got it, okay. I was just trying to, just trying to figure out where I was.
Right, right. Yeah, for the weight load of the fire...
For a fire truck.
Yeah. Yeah, if we go to the, if you go two pages ahead to L201, that's where we've kind of bubbled some of these changes. That's, here's where we're kind of zooming in a little bit more and get a better sense of what's transpired. So that path is now going to be a little bit wider, we've gotten all the sizing of his, the fire apparatus, as well as weights. So that's, that's been one change. The other one was the existing Academy Drive down at the bottom, that's also kind of bubbled in red, which is where Academy Drive will be propped next to Grayson Center. And there were some questions about just making sure that the access was sufficient for him, and he sent through an email today saying that everything is looking good and provided his approval. Yes, thank you. And then at the very bottom there is the turnaround for the fire ladder trucks to come, if they're going to dead end there, they have a turnaround where they can back out. That was of his request as well. So these are the primary changes. We've also located snow storage and the other requests that came in at our last TRC. So we feel like we've addressed everything at this point, but we know that there's a letter that came through today with a few more points from the last TRC. So we're happy to, happy to discuss anything that you guys have.
Where's the snow storage?
L401. L401. It's one of the last pages, and we've got it as attached.
The last page?
Yeah, last page. Thank you. So off of the new parking lot area, we've located the central drive there.
You don't show any loading or unloading spaces for Estabrook?
The, the existing lot behind Estabrook will remain, so that, it's not shaded gray, but that area just behind Estabrook Dining Hall is currently the loading and unloading area, along with their dumpsters, and so that is not changing.
Okay.
What we're doing is we're consolidating vehicular access to Estabrook Road, and so trucks and all cars will be basically coming down to one point of entry rather than having numerous curb cuts across Main Street and centralize the traffic as much as possible.
And I assume that, from what I'm reading here or looking at, you're not adding any new driveway cuts onto North Main?
Onto, onto Main Street?
Onto Main Street.
Onto Main Street. We are not adding new curb cuts, we are reducing the number of curb cuts.
And I, I asked my colleague a question about stormwater management, that's a later conversation, or how does that work?
Yeah, we have a civil engineer here if you have a question.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Paul, do you want to ask some questions of stormwater now?
No, I just wanted to hear their thoughts.
Okay.
Go from there.
Talk about it.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Sean Malone with Oak Consulting Group. I'm the civil engineer for the project. I'll give you a real brief kind of overview of what's happening now and what we'll be proposing for the future. So this here is the project watershed outlined here, and then we have it divided into several smaller subcatchments for the different catchment areas, catch basins throughout the project area. Real rep, real quick reference, Estabrook, Academic Center, Wilson, this is Grayson, and this is the portion of Academy Drive and parking area that will be eliminated as part of the project. In short, everything currently flows away from Main Street onto the site. It's captured with the closed drainage system, catch basins, drain manholes, piping, and essentially makes its way down to the swale that was constructed when Grayson was put in. That was designed and approved and constructed as an infiltration swale. Overflow from that swale is then captured and piped down to this existing bio swale that was constructed several years ago, adjacent to the boathouse. In the proposed condition, we're essentially keeping those same drainage patterns, everything flowing away from Main Street. We'll be catching things in a series of catch basins, area drains, and brought to that same existing infiltration swale and bio, bio swale down by the boathouse. Two things that we're doing, one, we're reducing the overall amount of impervious area by about 7,000 square feet. So just in and of itself, this project's going to have a positive impact on stormwater with the reduction of the rate and volume of runoff coming from this area down to the lake and to these other treatment areas. The reduction of impervious area also represents a lighter gluten load to those treatment areas, so again, enhancing those BMPs' abilities to treat the stormwater. The other thing we've added is a stormwater filter up in the parking lot, and this is going to capture some of the stormwater from the parking area, hold it, allow it to drain through the soil, and then it'll be underdrained once it's been treated, about two feet of soil that will pass through, be treated, and then piped into the overall drainage system. When we first started looking at this project, we understand everybody wants to use infiltration and get stormwater into the ground as best as we can. So we went up and dug a few test pits up in this area, and what we found was very shallow groundwater that was sitting on a dense, silky till only about two or three feet down. So we're very limited on what we can do for stormwater infiltration and treatment, so that's why we came up with the filter design here. So again, we've reduced the amount of impervious area, we're lessening the rate of runoff, we're lessening the volume of runoff, and providing new additional stormwater treatment. So we think this overall has a net positive effect of the drainage in the area.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Roger?
Well, my first comment is that I didn't find a, an application in the materials I received. A site review application.
From the TRC.
Or an application for site review.
That's because the planner requested to have it continued.
What?
It's because the planner requested to have it continued.
Oh, okay.
I need to speak up, I can't hear.
That's because the planner requested to have it continued.
So some of the documents we received came in as late as four o'clock this afternoon, and our planner did not have an opportunity to do a proper review and requested that we continue this hearing until the next meeting.
Are you requesting any waivers? And Ty and Vaughn pointed out there is no survey of the property. The parking lots do not show travel ways and dimensions, and I think it would be helpful if you listed the number of parking spaces so you don't have to go out around and count each one. And also on what I received, which was made worse tonight, I felt I was being flooded with plans, and the plans of the existing conditions seem to be better than some of the proposed ones. None of these have a signature block on them, so I'm not, I mean, the information on some of these color ones is very helpful because it made them clear to understand, but there didn't seem to be a site plan that said kind of here what it is and then have, you know, the other plans as part of that packet where you'd have drainage, landscaping, utilities, and so forth. There didn't seem, these plans kind of show what's there, but they're not, I mean, they're illustrative.
Well, we have, we submitted plans as part of the site plan application that included existing conditions plans, including park, total parking counts, new parking counts, yeah, and survey.
Well, I brought with me what I received when you came in for your informal consultation, and that didn't seem to include anything.
Yeah, we have a whole drawing set that we submitted with all the information that you just mentioned.
Which, yeah, but none of them are a survey of the property except the existing conditions. Okay, yes. Yeah, I got all of that.
Yeah, and there's, there should be a full campus site survey as well. Okay.
I did not find, and I don't think it's in here. There's a survey that is part of the existing conditions.
Okay, so that's one set of plans.
Yeah, and there's another set of plans, but there's not a survey in here except the existing.
This is the application. This is the application.
I was expecting a full report.
So I'm curious about traffic flow. You know, one whole route, the Academy Drive, is now not there, and I, it's hard, I mean, I think I have fire apparatus motion, but are all these streets two-way streets?
The streets like Estabrook and existing Academy Drive are two-way streets.
These are sort of the property, and the meats and towns are on the other side of where we're missing here. But that's existing conditions.
And so if you're going to the Smith Center, you can go in and out both Green Street and Academy Drive?
Correct, yeah.
But half of, half of Academy Drive, because the other half is now gone.
Correct.
And just why didn't, why was there no connection made to Estabrook from this big long loop of the Academy Drive plus Green?
Sorry, from, from Estabrook at the...
So it's just, there's, you know, whole access in and out that's not the same.
Right, and there's a private lot there, and due to the dimensions there, we can't get a two-lane road between that private lot and Smith Center.
So you're not concerned about bottlenecking, you know, traffic after games and, you know, when you have big performances or...
The goal is to provide a parking lot that is central to campus but is closer to Main Street so that those people aren't actually driving into the campus as much. Trying to get that to be kind of closer to Main Street and that you're going to be walking or, you know, whatever, you know, like a normal college campus or whatever, you're parking outside and you're walking into interior. And the goal for that is for student and faculty safety, reducing the number of crossings of pedestrian paths over roads. You know, like right now in front of Estabrook, that's, it's a full-on parking lot, and all the students come out of Wilson and the Academic Center, they're going to their dorms and then crossing back and forth. Just trying to move that parking closer to Main Street, and so that would be kind of like a primary entry. So we've got a visitor lot over on the Academy Drive at the main entrance, and then this kind of larger new lot that's close to Main Street.
And so overall parking spaces, what was it and what will it be?
I see it.
It is listed on... On the illustrated proposed plan, top left corner, there's parking calculations, existing 62, proposed 66. So essentially, we're making the parking more efficient, we're adding additional spaces and then reducing the overall impervious area at the same time while increasing safety.
A lot of the parking that seems to happen down, let's say beyond the Smith Center is along the sides of the roads, so that will be eliminated, but those aren't designated parking spots.
Let's speak to that, Peter, in terms of...
You mean Vaughn?
Right, the parking spot, the people parking alongside the road are not designated parking spots.
You mean down, down by the boathouse, Vaughn? That hill there?
And for different events, there are different numbers of cars, but I'm just thinking of large, tamboury kind of soccer or something like that where there are lots of cars. So...
Peter Gilgan, Brewster Academy. I would say, you know, we've had those large events like fireworks that we put on for the town every year, you know, and those events are sort of like surge environments where, you know, traffic has always flowed out of the areas that we have, and usually on those events, we can open up our, an exit off of Clark Road to make those on special terms if we have to. We do that for fireworks so that there's three means of egress out of the campus. So, you know...
That's just on a situational...
That's on situational, but, you know, we, I don't think there's, it's not going to increase traffic onto campus. It's, it would be how it's been for, you know, for as long as, as people have been there, coming to sporting events and coming to events like, like the Fourth of July fireworks or the, you know, New Year fireworks.
I appreciate the reduction of the number of access points to South Main Street. I mean, it's, we have obvious traffic problems on Main Street.
I think you guys, when we were at TRC, the person from, from the road management was, was very thankful for us removing a couple of our curb cuts, you know, I think that, and, and if we could remove even more, we would. I think we counted at 1.21 curb cuts that we have, that, you know, we would, you know, doing interventions like this hopefully can allow us to eliminate some of those, and as we have the new Route 28, you know, building, building plan, the packet coming in hopefully in the next few years, it'll help make that look a downtown environment like we're looking to do with a reduction, making it look more like a, you know, a classical like downtown area that you'd see with land posts and things of that nature, and less curb cuts.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
Well, I think the plans we received today should have a revision date on them.
The ones that they just handed us do.
That they, that does that, but not on the...
Oh, on the other ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, to back up on your point before, we were working with Chief Zadi this whole, so it just, it just took a lot of back and forth. We really wanted to make sure, we have a very good relationship with the fireplace in the town. We really wanted to make sure we addressed every one of his concerns, and it did take down to the 11th hour for sure, but I, I feel, you know, very happy that we were able to get there and to make sure that Tom felt comfortable with the, the level of access that we're having for the fire department.
And that's what we have in the packet we received this evening?
Uh, yeah, and in the packet you have it here, and Chief Zadi did send an email, I think.
Yes, Chief Zadi sent an email, that's right. Did you resolve the concerns from the electric department about the voltage conversion?
Yeah, I mean, so the concerns that, that we heard at TRC revolved around, I think, suggestions of reducing the number of transformers on site.
Yes.
So, yeah, we are certainly open to doing that. I think we are waiting to get some cost feedback, back on that first, and then we'll kind of, we'll work with the town in terms of whether...
All right, so I'm just trying to say at the moment, it's not yet settled.
Not yet.
Okay.
So if we looked at it more when we were speaking with Barry as, as more of a recommendation...
If you could get closer with the mic.
Yeah, sorry, I apologize. We would look at it when we were speaking with Barry at TRC as more of like a recommendation of what we would do, and the thought was that when we get to building permit status, we would work with him more on the implementation side.
Okay.
At a core, he didn't, it didn't seem to be that there was any issue with what we were doing. It was, hey, while you're doing this, it could be even better if, and we're totally open to that, but, you know, I think that's more further down the line towards construction than not at the planning phase.
And not necessarily a requirement for what we're doing.
Yeah, not a requirement, but certainly something we want to, you know, it, it's also enticing to us because it gets us, it allows us to remove that one power pole that's on, right on Main Street, which we, if you look in some of the earlier renderings that we had in the packet, that was one we couldn't remove in the original plan. So we're very open to that because it's, it's good for the town, it's good for us and all around.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
No, no, but we're, we're going to move ahead and open the public hearing so that we can hear from the public.
I, I intend to do that, certainly. I was just wondering if we want to accept the application as complete.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll make that, that motion, and it is complete, right, Leanne? The documents?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
You're going to make that motion?
I'm making that motion.
All right, and I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All right, I will, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, one extension? Any opposition? All right, we'll accept the application as complete, and we'll open the public hearing. Would anybody else in the public like to speak to this application?
My name is Peter Batcholder. I'm a resident on 10 Green Street. So the point I, this is, this is probably a really good thing for the campus and a real positive thing for Brewster to have more parking centralized so that the, you know, the kids don't get run over with everyone, the traffic pattern. Our concern, my concern and the other residents' concern on Green Street is just the amount of traffic that we get on Green Street right now, which is quite a bit. And recently, we, we called Brewster and said that it's, it's pretty active on Green Street, the buses, the kids, field hockey. But, so, over the years, the past 25 years, we've, we've discussed the traffic pattern on Green Street... we've, we've discussed the traffic pattern on Green Street and Brewster's access onto Green Street. And so, now, we've, we're living with the, the deal that we are part of Brewster, whether we like it or not, and that Green Street's access is a big part of Brewster's traffic pattern. So, we really just, from that perspective, we really just plead with them, Brewster, to help us control the traffic pattern, to, to divert it away from Green Street if they can. So, now, with this opportunity, with the, them reconfiguring the road system, I know it's central, it doesn't really take into consideration the outline loop, I'll call it the outline loop, which is the, from Academy Drive all the way in front of the Smith Center, all the way to Green Street, and out to Main Street again. That is the internal Lake Street loop that Brewster uses, and, and residents use when they use the Smith Center, and when they have sporting events, or in the summertime, they have different events down there, and they learn that, hey, you can get down Green Street real easy, you don't have to go through, over speed bumps, and you can, you can zip down that road and get right to the campus and the Smith Center, and, so we have that traffic, and, so, our concern is, as they reconfigure the center of the campus, it looks to me, without really studying it, and, and maybe as you guys do study it, that the Academy Drive is going to be cut off. So, right now, Academy Drive is the loop, it's the second loop to our Green Street loop, and if that loop goes away, and they don't have a way to get to the campus through the center of the campus to the sporting events or Smith Center, that their only alternative is to go out onto Main Street, circle back onto either Academy Drive or Green Street to get back to the fields, to get back to the lake, to get back to boating, to get back to parking, to go, whatever sporting event there is. So, I would suggest that, i-if in this plan, there could be a, another access to get out besides Green Street and Academy Drive, if, um, if, if that's correct, if what I'm saying is correct, that there's only two ways to get out of Brewster when you're in the lakeside road, and that's Green Street or Academy Drive. And you could do the church, you could do the church, but, but they, they stop them from, you know, kind of a one-way right there, so, they really only have two ways to get out, once they get into the lakeside of the property, if, as I understand it, the way the plan is right now. So, our dream on Green Street is that they create another access, they don't use Green Street as their campus. We don't want Brewster using Green Street as our campus, we fought them for the last 25 years, and lost every time. So, we know we can't win that, and we're not here to try to position that, but if they could create another loop besides looping into Green Street from Academy Drive by the church, all the way through in front of Smith Center, all the way, and there's only one way out at that point, and that's Green Street. Now, they can go to the new dorms that they built and cut through a dirt road and get out onto Clark Road, but right now, that's the loop, and we've already seen an increase in traffic anyways, it's just part of the deal. We've learned to live with it, and, but if there was a way to either create a road system that after they got past, past the Smith Center, that it could loop back next to the new ice rink, back onto Estabrook, some kind of loop there, away from the kids, then, then that would take the pressure off Green Street. They're still going to use Green Street, everybody, you know, it's, it's a cool street to zip down, but if there was another way to, to, to take some of the pressure off a residential street, that would be good. So, that's really our goal tonight, my goal tonight, is to really see if there's another way to create a, undo the pressure on Green Street, because already, it's pretty busy. And they could put a memo out, Brewster could put a memo out, and they've done this before, where they say, all right, no buses use Green Street, if we see any residents use Green Street, we're going to, whatever, we're going to send you a letter, or, or any, any faculty, you know, stay away from Green Street, let's lower the traffic, but that only lasts so long, that only lasts so long. They sent letters out to tell the delivery people, if you use this street, we'll find you. Well, they never find them, it was just kind of a, don't use Green Street, kind of a tactic, but that didn't work either. So, over those 25 years, we've learned to, to battle with Brewster, to try to lessen the traffic, and accept that we are an extension of Brewster, and that, that even though it's a residential street, an important residential street, Brewster owns half of it. So, they now own half of Green Street, except one house. So, the only house left on one side of the street is Al Pierce, 93 years old. So, that's the last house on the left side, they've bought every house on that side, and they've turned one into a dorm, and they've already absorbed a couple of those lots into their master lot. So, it's probably inevitable, but we still have half the street, the other side of the street is all owned by residents, and even though the street has been damaged now, in my opinion, from Brewster purchasing it and putting dorms on it, and using it as an access road, an extension of Brewster's campus, my plea to you is to help prevent any more further traffic onto Green Street by this plan. And I don't have, I don't understand the full plan of what that means, what they're doing with the parking, other than they're reconfiguring it, but, but it will have an impact, I'm sure, on Green Street, and, and it's already hard enough to get out of Green Street with Crescent Lake right there, there's a lot of traffic, and you got to speed out of there a lot of times. If we add more traffic to that, in Brewster's lakeside loop, then that would be a tragedy, if we could do something about that. So, that's what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this? Please come up.
I'm Amy Hines.
Could you speak into the mic?
I'm Amy Hines, and I live on 22 Green Street. Um, I have, I have some concerns. The street is, is narrow and short, and I just wondered whether they might do a traffic study, because in the summertime, you can't even get out of Green Street, and then you add construction to that, and, um, also, I mean, I have a lot of safety concerns too, with how narrow it is, I mean, if you put a dump truck going down there, you can't fit a car in there. There's just been a lot of traffic, I agree with Peter, you know, and if we're going to get more traffic, I mean, are they going to have to widen the road? I mean, I mean, I don't know what the options are for us as taxpayers, you know? But anyways, I hope they can figure out something different to do with, without closing these two road, access roads, because that only leaves, like you said, one loop going around, you know, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ed Hines, I'm at 22 Green Street. My concerns are the safety issues on using Green Street with Crescent Lake across there, that is such a dangerous intersection, and again, I'll reiterate what my wife said about, if, if there's a delivery truck and a regular passenger vehicle using the road at the same time, someone's got to pull over, it, it's just not wide enough. People have been using the access roads that Brewster has, as long as Brewster's been open, and, I, I've been around here for a long time, I've never heard anyone complain about it, I've never heard anyone bring up, they're in fear of the safety of their students because of the parking situations, especially when their buses fly down our street like it's nothing, and as Peter brought it up, and my wife brought it up, you know, we've asked them, we've complained about it, we've talked to the police department before, it lasts for a couple days, and then it's gone. We have a lot of elderly people that, because Brewster is open to the public, which we are all grateful for, but we have a lot of elderly people that walk their dogs down there, they bring their grandchildren down there, and they have a dorm on there with, you know, they have one dorm, I believe it's the boys' dorm, you know, we see those kids, they're kids, like every other place, they just walk out, nobody looks, okay? We're mindful of that, because we know they're there, but we also know that Green Street's like 20 miles an hour, it's, it's not a through street, there's a posted sign right there that says, "Not a through street." I don't care who uses it, I don't care how many people use it, but they're not respectful to the speed, and someone's going to get hurt, and it's like anything else around here, nobody does anything until there's a catastrophe. So, that's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else from the public like to make a comment? All right, I think we'll leave the public session open, and I'd make a motion to continue this. Leanne, what's the date we're going to continue to, to the 20th?
June 3rd.
To June 3rd, I'll make a motion to continue this till June 3rd.
Okay, what about asking for a traffic study from Brewster? I, I mean, it's, it's in our regulations, we certainly have the authority to do that.
I agree, I had another question, which I thought of after you shut it down. We, has anyone looked into whether that road can be widened?
You're talking about Green Street?
Yeah. Is it even possible? Whether anybody wants it or not, is it possible?
If you could, if you're going to make a comment, could you come up to the microphone, please?
Well, it's basically their dorm, it's, their, their dorm is very close, it's basically right on the street, I mean...
So, I, I would...
It has no frontage.
Yeah, well, I would presume that to widen the street, it would have to infringe on some of the property, to some of the lots.
It would be quite the effect on, on our property as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just repaved, but the, the edges are, are actually, the water's gone down through, so it's really kind of a dip.
All right, so Kathy, with regard to your comment about a traffic study, and I don't know, I'm not sure what the mechanics are about requesting that, but we can certainly look into that and discuss it with our planner.
Thank you.
What about having like a sign at the end of the street, no, but nobody can go down unless you're a resident, or, like, kind of rules about when you can go up and down the street, has anyone talked, I'm, I'm new to the board, but, so I haven't heard the chatter, but that's something that's kind of easy, if there's, like, when is it a problem? It's not the spurts, when we have big fairs and whatever, but is there a time of day?
Well, I imagine that's something you'd learn through a traffic study.
Right, well, but I'm asking them, because they know when it's a nuisance to you. Can you speak to that?
So, all three of us that are here tonight work full-time, we're not always there. So, we see this stuff when we see it, we hear it from other people, so a traffic study would probably be the best bet. So, as far as widening the roads go, it would infringe on Brewster's property as well as ours' property.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so...
Thank you.
Another option, and I'm, I'm sure it's been looked at, is to make Estabrook the new loop, instead of the old Academy Drive, so that you still have, you know, an alternate loop to get out of the lake-level loop.
Yeah, and my, Andy spoke to this earlier, but that, there's a private house at the end of Estabrook, we do, there's not enough space to have Estabrook Drive, Estabrook Drive be a loop. And to go, to kind of go back to the traffic study, a traffic study is a months-long intensive process that I think would be undue on us to have to do, this would put our project months past when we're looking to start, and, you know, I think there is no increase in traffic coming onto our campus. I mean, the idea for this whole pro, you know, this whole project is to decrease the amount of cars that are coming into our campus, thus decreasing the amount of cars that are coming off of our campus. So, I think when you, when you look at it, you think about the, what we're trying to do here is to, to help with all-around traffic on campus, both incoming on campus and outgoing, right? And, you know, Green Street's, you know, and I, and I understand, and we are, we are owners of, you know, multiple homes on Green Street, it's a public road, you know, and putting a sign at the end that says you can't drive down this, I don't know that you're allowed to do that on a public road, right? I would, I would have your road, your road, you know, highway department come in to speak to that, but I don't think that's allowed to do.
I would imagine that even if you did that, the majority of the traffic there are Brewster people and residents, so, people would be allowed to go down there anyway.
Yeah, and, you know, the majority of the traffic we see during the day is, we open up our gym for everyone in the public to be able to have a gym membership, and we have a very great group of people, and it, it tends to, to trend towards the older demographic, and, you know, we get letters all the time telling us how much the people appreciate it and this and that, and generally, those people will use Estabrook Drive, and what you see is the ones that are not as mobile, they'll use the front, and those are the people that are typically going out Green Street, you know? The idea for people coming onto Brewster would be, if you're coming for an appointment, you come into Academy Drive, you park in the visitors' lot, you finish what you're doing, you leave via the same way you came in. And we're trying to make it more like you would see, as Andy spoke to earlier, a traditional campus-style environment, where traffic is to the periphery, and pedestrian tra, you know, vehicular traffic is to the periphery, and pedestrian ta-traffic is at the core, which we want to see, less, less vehi-vehicular and pedestrian traffic crossing.
Yeah, I don't see where there, there's any basis for requesting a traffic study, because they are not doing anything by this proposal that would increase traffic, and I think an argument could be made, by moving the parking closer to South Main Street, you're getting fewer cars down in this direction.
That's, that's our thought as well, you know, but...
I guess the other point I'd make to Roger's point there is that you're not increasing any of the parking on Academy, or I should say, called it the lakeside, there's no increase in parking, so, I don't know how there would be any increase in traffic, other than where people now could, as the point was made earlier, the, the amount of parking there is now could exit currently on Academy, and then now, you're reducing that to just the one leg of Academy and Green, so in theory, you're going to have perhaps a third increase in traffic on Green Street.
And there, there may be other methods of linking Estabrook to the big loop, I mean, you've got a stub road that goes up alongside of Grayson, that could be connected without going near that little property that's...
Yeah, right now, we're not looking to do that, Vaughn, because it's, that would be increasing vehicular traffic on an area where students are traversing constantly.
Mr. Chairman?
It's a very short connector.
Yeah, but it would still, it would, it would, you know, it would have the ability to increase traffic in that area that we're looking to reduce.
But that tra-traffic that is increasing is less traffic going to Green Street?
I would say potentially, but most of that traffic is going to go back out the way that it came in.
Sure.
You know, and if you think about the, the removal of the Academy Drive exit, when anyone comes out of the, the Academy Drive area that we're looking to eliminate right now, they have a choice, they can go lakeside, or they can go Main Street. The lakeside's going to naturally take them, you know, potentially towards Green Street, this doesn't even give them the option to go there, you know? So, I think when we look at it with everyone, it, the idea, like we said, in the, the whole, the whole project is designed around reducing traffic.
But it, it will increase Green Street traffic, no question.
Definitely.
Well, we're not increasing any traffic on the campus, I would say, I, I can't speak to what will, I would say could, I, I wouldn't say a guarantee will.
That's why we need a traffic engineer to, to look at this and come up with some options.
Right, right now, there are speed bumps on Academy Drive?
There are, yep.
So therefore, this is actually one reason why people use Green Street, because they can go on Green Street without going over speed bumps.
I, I would say that's a potential reason.
And so therefore, to me, getting rid of Academy Drive as a through road is not really going to change much as to what goes on to Green Street. gonna change much as to what goes on to Green Street.
That's, that's our thought, you know, that's, that's our, our hope and what we want to do by, as far as being good neighbors to the people that we live around. You know, we have 34 butters that we have to send out letters to each time, and we, we care about their, you know, we care about them, we care about their interaction with our Academy.
And I, you know, if, if there's gonna be a traffic study done, it might be done by some expert who comes in and looks. At the same time, if you're gonna do one, it is going to be so varied as to what occurs at different seasons of the year, that it would have to be a year-long study, which is, I think, a-
A huge burden.
A huge burden to, to deal with. So I don't think that a, a traffic study, other than maybe having somebody look and say, "Is there any other way to do this?", which there doesn't seem to be, based on traffic flow around the campus, and the fact that there presently are speed bumps on Academy Road, which means that people don't use that as a through road. I don't understand why a traffic study needs to be done.
And maybe we should say, we should have a, a traffic analysis perhaps, rather than a study. You know, certainly somebody to look at the traffic flow, but not take weeks or months or seasons.
You're heading into an interesting time, you know, our commencement is a few weeks away, so by the time you even go, you'll be in a completely different traffic demographic than you are now.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Paul?
You have an open motion, unseconded. If I were to second your motion, would that limit the discussion that we're having here?
Likely it would.
Then I won't second your motion.
What's the motion again?
To continue the hearing.
I wanted to just, I, I know you had an open motion, I just, protocol, if we second it, this conversation feels good. Probably should go on a little bit, so, I'm not gonna second your motion.
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
I still disagree, there's any basis for requesting a traffic analysis or a traffic study. They're only addressing a parking lot, and I think we're very fortunate, they have come in with a plan, they have done a lot of work to prepare it, and that it's, I think, is an improvement of the campus. And they're not generating anything here. And I think the people who go to Smith Center are the people-
I'm sorry.
The people who go to the Smith Center are the ones who drive out Green Street, and they're gonna drive out Green Street when they go to the Smith Center, whether Academy Drive is there or not.
Paul?
Thank you. It, it sounds like you are moving parked cars closer to, to Main Street, good. Those cars aren't gonna exit out of Greens, may not exit out of Green Street, good. I think what I heard people saying is buses whizzing down Green Street, is, is your scheme designed to relocate or reorder the way bus traffic comes into the campus? If the answer is no, then their, their concern is the same.
I agree.
If the answer is yes, or if you have a different scheme, I'd like to hear it.
Well, Paul, I, I think when I, when I hear whizzing down the road-
I'm just using air words, you know, paraphrasing.
We don't see that, right? So we, we do, we do a safety training with all of our drivers every year. They have to go to a pretty intense safety training with our, our head of security and life safety, that we take them down to an institute in Massachusetts where they learn how to drive. We go to the nth degree to make sure that our, our drivers are being respectful, our, our name is emblazoned on the side, and if we have any issues where people are speeding or driving improperly, we take care of those immediately.
So set that aside, is the scheme, and I mean that professionally, is, is the notion you're building here with these new loops and with moving parking closer to the street, is that going to affect bus traffic coming down Green Street?
I don't see how.
So it's, it has, it's no effect on bus traffic? It'll be the same volume, prospective weight?
I'm assuming it would be the same volume, based on the choice where people are on campus, you know.
And so I will conclude by saying, I, I personally think a traffic study would be, I heard somebody say, "There's a lot of traffic during skating season, there's a lot of traffic during commencement season, there's a lot of..." This study could be a very long-winded, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, but a long-term effort, and it feels like it wouldn't necessarily, it would be a burden. That's kind of where I think it comes out.
But Doug, but I think we also have to consider the neighbors. I mean, this is not the first time that the people on Green Street have had some trouble and, and had some concerns about what their neighbor is doing, and I, it's, it's tough to hear that, for me, and I, I don't think any of, you know, Roger, you seem to be very protective of, you know, where you are and how much traffic goes down there, and it seems like we should be giving the same kind of respect or consideration to the people on Green Street. It just, I, I just hate to just ignore what the residents on Green Street are saying because we think a traffic study is gonna be, take a long time, or a traffic analysis. You know, how many vehicle-to-student near crashes are there on campus?
I don't think that anybody can give you that number.
Well, that's what, I mean, but that's part of their premise, but that's part of their premise.
I, I, well, they're trying to minimize risk certainly by separating vehicle and pedestrian traffic, but with regard to near misses, typically I would imagine those aren't reportable, it's the people that actually get hit that get reported.
If somebody were building something down here, then I think absolutely we could require a traffic study. But that is a public road, but is there any possibility of having bus traffic prohibited on it? I mean, that might be something to be explored with the town. That might at least address some of your concern.
That's kind of-
Because that would not stop the public access, but it can be regulated.
That's kind of what I was getting at with the signage. I've seen in another town I, town I used to live in, and it was a cut-through, which I know yours isn't, but it kind of is. It is a cut-through. And it's a narrow street, and half of it, like you said, is, is Brewster anyway, which I didn't realize. But the bus, number one, is huge to me, maybe they don't go down Green Street anymore.
But they're micro birds, so they're, 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 they're large vans, right? And I think that's a, I don't know that that's something we would decide here, you know, I'm just, I think that is a DOT type, it's a totally different avenue than this, because it is a public road, you know, Brewster Academy's been there since 1806, right? And it's been a public road since then, you know? This type of traffic has always been, and I assume it predates the residents on Green Street as well.
Have you considered adding speed bumps to the Green Street end?
It's a public road.
No, no, not on Green Street.
Oh, on our side?
Yeah.
Not at this time.
That's a possibility to slow the buses down.
No, it'd slow the buses down at the end, but, you know.
I don't know what, you know, I think if, if we were to do an analysis on that, I don't know what that would, that would see for actual reduction in anything on Green Street. Again, it's a public street.
No, I didn't mean on Green Street.
Yeah, I follow.
Are there speed bumps between where Academy Drive gets down to the lake area and Green Street? In other words, that section which goes along the exterior behind Smith Center?
Right now, there are three that would be in this path. There is one that is, say, I would say about 800 feet as you get into Academy Drive, there's one that is on the upslope by the boathouse, and then there is one that is in front of the Smith Center.
I mean, if, if, if there are fewer speed bumps going out Academy Drive to the, to the, you know, the town side, and there are more getting over to Green Street, many buses probably would opt to go for town side.
Well, what I, another part that I think is important to layer into this is our storage for our, for our micro birds, for our vans, is at 7 Center Street, at the, at the old Citizens Bank Building, that is our facilities building. Our, our coaches are required to bring them back there after an event. What our people typically do is they go out the main entrance because it's right there in proximity, right? So, I, I, you know, again, I just, we can, we talk with our people internally, we make sure they're respectful of our neighbors, you know, and, but being that Green Street is a public road, it is, it is an avenue that is viable.
But, but what I'm suggesting is that when you're building trails in the mountains and you want to switch back, and you don't want people to, to cut the switchback, you put a whole lot of stuff in between. And so if you ended up putting a whole lot more speed bumps between Academy Drive and Green Street, that would make that a less pleasant way to go, and you'd go out the other way.
I would certainly say that's potentially, yeah.
I mean, and that, that ends up, that kind of passive change encourages people to go the other way. And, and your coaches are going to, you know, where they park the vans, and that's the way they go. So, that might be something to consider.
And I would presume with regard to your coaches, you have the ability to direct the drivers as to the route that they should take.
Yeah, you know, as much as you do for people, you know, we do have that ability, yes, Doug.
Okay, well, it, it seems like the consensus is no traffic, traffic study, but it, it also seems that Brewster needs to put a little more thought into this, and they've got a month to do it, and come back to us when they-
Well, they have a month to do it presuming that we continue this hearing.
I think-
We, we, I, I made a motion to continue, but nobody seconded it yet.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All right.
Are you gonna vote on that?
An emotion to continue it?
Well, just let me finish my thought. I mean, they, certainly, they, they can have, come back with some options after reliving the, the discussions we've just had with the neighbors.
That's true, and I think the continuance would also give our planner the opportunity to do a thorough review of some of the information that they received today, and haven't had the proper time to do it.
And, and the same thing on our side, Kathy, because we, we also received documents today at 5:15 for the first time that we need to review.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd do tie and bond.
What'd you say?
You'd respond to the tie and bond memo.
The engineer's review.
Engineer's review.
Right, right. And so, there's been a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, no opposition? All right, so we're gonna continue this to June 3rd. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, June 3rd here at the Great Hall. Thank you. All right, new business. The only new business that I'd like to mention is that at tomorrow evening's select board meeting, I will be presenting the proposed fees for the short-term rental, and I'm wondering if anybody amongst the board has any comments or question on that.
Nope.
Go for it.
Okay, very good.
I haven't tried to fight in my life, I'd say anything in my life, I'll stop down.
And then the next order of business is approval of minutes from April 15th. I'm Roger, I'm depending on you.
You just gotta let me find my minutes. I have one general comment, is in a number of places, it says the board discussed, but it doesn't really say what was discussed, or, or what was the outcome. And on page 3, line 125, I believe it should read, "It was confirmed that this select board will need to, it should be to hold the hearing to adopt the fees." And then in the next sentence, it says, "It was also mentioned to add a second owner's signature," and I believe that was to the application. And, I mean, that says there's clarification on the number of plans requested, so that the applicant is right and is copied, but it doesn't, doesn't say what exactly. And then on line-
Roger, how would you suggest we reword line 130 there about the clarification?
What did we clarify?
The number.
What is the number?
I think the intent there was to discuss the number of plans that should be submitted with the application, so that the applicant is providing sufficient copies for the staff, board members, and the physical file.
How many is that?
That's the question.
10?
You know, so if we've got one for staff, I presume, one for each board member, and one for the physical file? I think that's what it should be. That would be nine, right? No?
Others.
Oh, there's, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I was, I was only, I was forgetting to include the alternates.
10 plus 2.
So it's 10 plus 2?
No, there's actually 11 of you now.
Right. All right, so a total of 14?
I think we said 15 at some point in time, yeah.
15 copies, all right. So it should read, it should-
Plans requested as 15.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Roger, go ahead.
And then it, well, going back to 127, it's 26, I believe, they want to add a second owner's sig, signature line to the application, and then adjustments were made to the last paragraph of the application, or of some document to reference the noise ordinance in trash can, and what that, what last paragraph that was should be specified. Is that the application, or the checklist, or?
I already made the changes to both and all of them, so.
Thank you. Do we still want it properly reflected in the minutes?
Correct, and I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah.
I can email C, about this, I'll email Bridget, and she can make the changes, and then she'll accurately reflect it.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, and then line 134, there was consensus, I believe it should be, the fees, plural, are acceptable.
Is that all you got, Roger?
That's about it, but I think there is, I don't have necessarily a good example in front of me, but-
I know, there's also one on page 4, the back page, 147, it's really the demolition review ordinance, not delay, I misspoke, it's review. So it's accurate, but I was inaccurate.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I abstained, I wasn't here.
Upstate. Two extensions. Any opposed? All right, thank you. And I'll make a motion to, oh, sorry.
Need to continue at will to June 3rd.
Ah, so, a motion to continue the Atwell application to June 3rd here at the Great Hall?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. And I've just requested some kind of notification that the demolition review ordinance hearing, whatever date that is, be notified as soon as possible, so I could let proponents know.
I would expect it would be- I would expect it would be, come out
Well, it's, it's a discussion, but they'd like to be here to discuss.
But I imagine, will there be a, a public notice for that meeting?
And it, it's in, like, on the agenda, but I can post the agenda early if that was the
That would be helpful.
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
The intent is to hand it over to the planning board for whatever massage we decide on, and then it would have to go to the two public
That's right.
Hearings, yeah.
Uh, and, and Roger, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. Steve Patrickson sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen, uh, about the short-term rental ordinance, and it is a page, but the gist of it is that the planning board did not add language to the warrant article regarding grandfathering before the ballot, the ordinance went on the ballot for the town people to vote. Um, grandfathering is governed by state statute. It's RSA 67419, and grandfathering is a use that is permitted, a permitted, lawfully existing use at the time of the change, zoning change, which makes it no longer a permitted use. And it's not something you put in the zoning ordinance. It's, uh, that's the state statute, and when we were talking about this, which we did multiple times, but included a, uh, public forum on October 15th, and then two public hearings, people asked about establishing grandfathering, and it was suggested you could do it by, say, um, submitting a room and meals tax receipt, or notice, uh, form, or something on Airbnb, but something to establish that it was a lawfully existing use prior to the point in, I think it was December, when the first public notice of the ordinance was published. So it's not something that should be in the zoning ordinance. Um, it's, otherwise, you'd have to do it every time you amend to the zoning ordinance. Um, but we were trying to help people on what they needed to do to establish the use was grand, use was grandfathered, and that is necessarily limited to those two things, but you have to do something to show you, you were doing it lawfully, and if you can do that, then you're grandfathered. So I think Steve kind of missed the boat on part of that. I think it was maybe a lack of understanding of the process and the discussion, um, but
If we're going to publish, um, what the fees will be for the new ones, we should probably, at the same time, you know, put a notice in that, you know, you'll need to prove.
Well, so that's certainly for the select board, not for the planning board. But I think to what Roger just spoke to, there are two issues there. One is addressing grandfathering, and the other one is, uh, addressing, uh, the pre-existing use. So, uh, I know that we spoke several times during the hearings that these ordinance, ordinances would not, uh, disqualify conforming uses prior to the announcement of this ordinance. Separately, the, uh, to, to be able to have somebody validate that they had a legally existing, pre-existing use, there are a number of means to do that, whether it be a history of payments to the state for the meals tax, room and meals tax, or, uh, a rental history from an agency. I mean, there's a, a number of ways to do it.
But when does it need to be proven?
Uh, I, I imagine if somebody complains to the planning and zoning department about a short-term rental that is, has not gone through the conditional use permit and short-term rental application process, and they claim that it is a legally pre-existing use, then it would, once it's brought to the town's attention, they could ask for validation from that operator.
So just by complaint?
I imagine so.
Well, I, I would say that if they want, if they want to, uh, establish that they are not subject to the ordinance, then they need to prove that fact.
Yes.
When, though?
Uh, if they want to continue to operate.
So that could go in the paper.
Yeah, so they could be proactive and come in and validate themselves prior to any complaint.
Yes.
But I, I don't think that the town is going to be going out auditing all of the current short-term rentals to see that they are pre-existing uses.
But there's probably an incentive to somebody who is grandfathered to establish that's the case, so they can show that they're not, uh, operating illegally, and, or, and that they, and that they not have to comply with the ordinance. Because we did look at something that would apply to everybody, um, but it, we could not do that as a zoning ordinance.
Right.
And so if somebody thinks they're grandfathered, they need to come into the planning department and establish that to be the case.
So if somebody is grandfathered in, do they have to apply for the?
No, they have to establish that they are exempt from the ordinance.
All right, any other business?
Well, I have one other comment. Um, on the notice of decision from the Board of Adjustment, for example, on the Barlow Revocable Trust, it doesn't tell you what they got a variance for. It simply says that, um, for variance under section, whatever, the non-conforming structure, replacement of a structure provided, the replacement structure is the same size and configuration as the non-conforming structure, and the location is the same or less non-conforming location. And that's, presumably, they want to build something that isn't, doesn't conform with that, but it doesn't tell you what they actually were trying to get a variance for. And then, um, there was, uh, well, um, even our friends at J1, whatever it is, Realty Trust, non-conforming structure, uh, the board discussed for interim that what they asked for may not be submitted, but they don't tell you what they got. And actually, that says it was a special exception, and they talked about a variance. But, um, you know, an expansion, an extension of structures of the Wolfbrock Planning zoning ordinance, it doesn't tell you what they got a variance for.
Well, usually, you, you would refer to the number in the ordinance that you're needing, you know, you'd cite numbers.
Yeah, but you would tell, I mean, when you fill out the application, you have to tell them you want a variance, say, to section whatever it is, in order to do such and such. And that really should go in the notice, and it should go in the notice of decision, because all this tells you is they apparently wanted to expand a structure, um, actually, that one it does, you know, you can get a little bit more of it because they didn't submit enough information, but it should be stated in the notice and in the notice of decision what they're seeking relief under a particular provision of the zoning ordinance for.
I guess, Roger, what you mean is, uh, tell me if I'm mistaken, but not only cite the ordinance they're seeking relief from, but to explain what they're doing with that relief.
Yeah, it's like a variance, say, a variance to section such and such, uh, to an article to construct a, uh, for variance to construct a, um, addition with less than the required setback.
So I, I agree, it would be good to have that referenced in the notice of decision for future reference. Uh, and I guess that's feedback we can give to, uh, I guess, the chair of the zoning board. All right, anything else? As the bell tolls.
I move to adjourn.
And I'll second that motion.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.